I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, created in the first place.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to the August seventeenth meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of August third, two thousand sixteen? A motion is second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills.
Some moves, sir.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we've got a second. Any discussion on the financial report? The only thing I'd like to make the public aware of, this is a financial activity report from July one to July thirty first. I just wanted to read off the fund balances if I could real quickly. Currently, we have one million eighty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents in the general fund. We've got two million six hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-two cents in the water fund. We've got seven million seven hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and three cents in the sewer fund. And we have six million three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents in the maintenance facility fund for a total of seventeen million four hundred and thirty-one dollars and four seven, four hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Lou, you've got a couple, well Steve does. Oops, Steve, you've got two budget amendments.
That's it. The first one is the first one of the new fiscal year is budget amendment number twenty seventeen dash zero one. It's to budget forty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars for the purchase of a two thousand sixteen Chevrolet Suburban SUV. And that will be funded by twenty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars from the general fund, six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars from the water fund, and ten thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars from the sewer fund.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand seventeen dash oh one?
Some moves, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And just to make it clear, Lou, you're going to be replacing the two thousand two expedition.
Yes.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second budget amendment is number twenty seventeen dash zero two. It's a budget two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for the purchase of two F-750 dump trucks. That amount is divided evenly between the three funds, general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. Those funds were budgeted last year. The trucks were ordered last year. They did not come in until this year, however. So, I put the budget into the current year.
Do we have a motion to approve two thousand seventeen dash oh two?
Second.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, you are on.
The first item I have is the, we have a number of ordinances that have been amended. They were introduced at the last meeting. In order to renege some of the work here, I'm going to explain to the board that Art fourteen of the town's charter was amended to provide that misdemeanor. And I'll read what it is. Every act or omission which by ordinance is made a misdemeanor under the authority of this charter unless otherwise provided upon conviction before any judge in the district court shall be subject to a fine not to exceed one thousand dollars of imprisonment, not to exceed ninety days for both fine and such imprisonment. Each day such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. This section of the code was amended in order for these offenses, misdemeanor offenses, to be tried in the district court. And because the district court has jurisdiction for offenses, criminal offenses, and a penalty of ninety days or less, it does not provide for jury trial for a defendant in a criminal case presented by the town for violation of the ordinance. And consequently, the jury trial can't be prayed in the district court. This would renege some of the charges that we might bring upon a criminal violation of the town charter. Now pursuant to that.
My thing, we've already introduced and we can move ahead.
Yeah, we introduced these ordinances at the last meeting on the third. And the first ordinance four dash two thousand sixteen, if you look up the works generally, all this amendment does is amend the penalty section under this particular chapter to comply with the charter that I just read. So, I would ask that the board adopt ordinance four dash two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance four dash two thousand sixteen?
Some moves.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance five dash two sixteen deals with chapter thirteen oh four, water service. The penalty under this section has been amended to comply with the charter also. And I would ask that the board adopt ordinance five dash two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance five dash two thousand sixteen?
Some moves.
And a second. Any discussion on the ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance six dash two sixteen deals with chapter fifteen oh four, construction regulations generally. The penalty section under this chapter has been amended also as the previous ordinances have done to comply with the charter of the town bill.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance six dash two thousand sixteen?
Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance seven dash two sixteen deals with chapter fifteen sixteen, housing standards. Also amending the penalty under this section to conform with the charter as I've read previously. I would recommend that the board adopt ordinance seven dash two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance seven dash two thousand sixteen?
Some moves, sir.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? And a second. Any discussion on the ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last ordinance I have is ordinance eight dash two sixteen deals with chapter thirteen six point sixteen, stormwater management. Penalty under this chapter also has been amended to comply with the charter as previously expressed. I would recommend that the board adopt ordinance eight dash two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance eight dash two thousand sixteen?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The ordinance says, the next item I have is a request for authorization from KCI Technologies to submit a conditional letter of map revision to FEMA for review. The reason I asked the board for authorization to do this, the review fee by FEMA is sixty-five hundred dollars. And this, this POMAR, this conditional letter of map revision, is a process by which we hopefully can satisfy the one hundredth of a foot rise in the, in the structure that we hope to have the state highway install along Delaware Avenue for a footbridge for pedestrians at that location. So, I would ask the board, I recommended the board that we allow KCI to go forward, POMAR revision submission to FEMA so we can have this move along and move forward on this project.
Do we have a motion to authorize KCI Technologies to submit the application for POMAR to the Federal Emergency Management Administration?
Some moves.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the request? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item I have is the public works agreement with five oh three East Pulaski Highway, or I'm sorry, East Pulaski LLC relates to the Ramsey Ford project, the Quik Lane project out there doing. They had to comply with stormwater management. And in the process of doing that, they have to construct stormwater improvements along, I mean, about forty. And the area in which they have to construct these improvements is previously occupied by, occupied by the town's twelve-inch water line. Consequently, their contractor has to move that water line. And that will involve approximately two hundred and seventy-two hundred feet of twelve-inch line that has to be constructed in the state highway right of way. And then they'll remove the old water line and then construct their, their improvements to the stormwater management for that, that site. This will allow that site to go forward with development. I would recommend that the town approve a PWK with five oh three East Pulaski LLC.
Do we have a motion to approve the public works agreement five oh one, East Pulaski LLC?
Actually, five oh three, East Pulaski.
What did I say? Five oh one? Five oh three, East Pulaski LLC?
Second.
We have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, what's going to take place when they're moving that line to the other, people are hooked up to that line? Is it going to be temporary?
They'll do it at night. They'll shut the service down on that, on the twelve-inch existing line, and then tie in the new line. It'll be down for several hours. But it'll probably disrupt service at night. It won't hit anybody during the day, or any businesses or local people.
I was just wondering.
During the day.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last item I have is, we received a request from Cynthia Osborne. She's the executive director of the Elton Housing Authority. The Elton Housing Authority wants to submit a grant application to the Maryland Fort Worth Housing Trust, and which is staffed by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Their grants, grants by the Maryland Fort Worth Housing Trust are up to seventy-five thousand dollars and are project specific. Building and operating expenses and support services are eligible, eligible applicants, which include public housing authorities. We already supported this back in two thousand fourteen. They're asking for additional funds. They need another letter of support for their program. It's called Living the Legal Legacy. It's a program providing home ownership opportunities to six PHA public housing and housing choice thousand participant families and to provide for additional participants. They need the letter of support by the end of August. That's why I brought it up tonight. If the board approves the letter of support of the Elton Housing Authority with its grant application to the Maryland Fort Worth Housing Trust, and I will prepare the letter and Mayor often sign it. We can send it over to the Elton Housing Authority.
We have a motion to approve the letter of support that's needed for the Elton Housing Authority. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the letter of support? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That pleased my report.
Thank you, Lou. A couple things here real quickly. On Saturday, the Elton VFW is having their seventieth anniversary. And I'd like to ask the board to participate in the signing of a certificate of recognition. And I'd also like to proclaim Saturday, August twentieth, two thousand sixteen, as the VFW memorial post eighty-one seventy-five day.
Do you have a motion?
Yep, let's go ahead.
Also move.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion in regards to the letter or certificate of recognition? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Motion carries. We have, we were talking a little bit about Elton Housing Authority. Dan, could you take a look out there in front of the housing authority where the bus pulls in? I think there's a bus stop there. I'm not sure if that line where that paint job is, is, has been painted. Take, take a look at it and see. I'm not exactly sure where the bus is supposed to stop. But take a look at it there and see if it's designed for a bus stop and or if it is missing a, a paint on the line or if it's supposed to have. I don't know. Thank you, Dan. With that, I think it's all.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yep.
I mean, you want a line there. I mean, it stops traffic right there.
I was, I was.
Isn't there a way to get them off?
I think what it was, was a no parking area in front of there. And I don't think that they're seeing that it's a no parking area.
And?
They're parking there.
That's why they can't.
They pulled it away.
And then it's back to traffic all over.
So, take a look at it. Thank you, Jean, for reading it up. That's all I have this evening. Ms. Mary Jo, you are on.
I just wanted to thank, we had two big events in the past couple weeks. I mean, the video making, everyone that came out, we really appreciated. The finished product will be available soon. We'll let everyone know. And the chalk wall. If anybody was downtown yesterday, something so simple. And we thank you so much for the coverage you did in the week. There were more families and kids downtown than we've ever seen, just the chalk on the sidewalk. And it was a great event all around. So, I wanted to thank everybody that came out. And that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker. I'm going to give an update on Parks and Rec recreation for this summer. Thank you. This is the final week for the summer camp for two thousand sixteen. They had ten weeks of camp beginning of June the thirteenth and ending Friday, August the nineteenth this week. The following are registrations, registrations per week. First week, they had eighty-three participants. Second week, eighty-eight. Third week, ninety. Fourth week, seventy. Fifth week, ninety-one. Ninety-one was sixth week. Seventh week, seventy-nine. And eighth week, they had ninety-three participants. And a hundred and one on the ninth week. And this is the final week. They have sixty participants. The summer camp also held whiffle, T-ball, lead, a hundred and thirty-one participants. Five-star soccer league, which was ninety-three participants. And preschool and youth classes, which was fourteen participants. The camp preschool had three sessions, thirty-three participants. And baseball camp had two camps, forty-two participants. Dance camp, had twenty-eight participants. Cheerly, cheer camp, twelve participants. And current night, I would, thirty-five participants. Just to let you know that Parks and Rec really was active with the little building that we have, but they were moving. And our fall and winter activities online, please register. They're beginning next week, August the twenty-second. And on my report, as I see out there, I'm going to have to repeat this. Last meeting, I brought up about the lights heading toward Buckwood. Just in case. It was mentioned last week. I'm bringing it up again. They do need some lighting out there just before I get hammered. Is that okay? And then also, I was also approached about the question about the road work being done. Dan, you might know a little bit about that. If, I forgot how to express it. If it comes to play, Hartstone, remember I mentioned that about the road was really bad? Whenever we come to be able to have money to do that road, make sure you, you know, it's been said two or three times. Is that okay? And noticing, my last thing is that notice at night, there's a lot of bikes that are being driven on a red road at night by people with no lights. I'm not sure we have to chief, but it's starting to be really a safety factor now. So, last night, I saw about three kids riding. This was close to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock. No lights. So, it's very dangerous. That's it.
You know, I wanted to touch on your recreation if I could real quick before I move on to Charlie here. We introduced our community guide. We introduced our community guide earlier in the year. And we included in that community guide our Parks and Rec program for the spring, spring and summer. After talking to Mary McGaw, our director of Parks and Rec, it has been a home run for her. Our participation numbers are up based on putting the Parks and Rec guide into the community guide. It seems like it was better, better look, or more, I guess more people have looked at it. So, just in saying, I want to make everyone aware that the second community guide is in print right now. So, it'll include the, the fall and winter events for the Parks and Rec. But it also has some updates that we made some changes from our first community guide. You'll see that we added a calendar in our, in our next community guide. So, I think it's something that people will be able to use a little bit more. They'll actually put it on maybe their refrigerator or anything. So, I think it's, we're always looking at trying to make changes of that. And I want to stress, if anyone that's in the audience or anyone that's looking at it on video, any comments they have about the community guide, we're going to be printing this thing twice a year. So, we can update it all the time. Because we're going to include, it works out beautifully, to, we're using the funds that we had for Parks and Rec. And we're taking advantage of those dollars to produce this community guide. So, it's very good for anyone to ask for any type of changes or want to see something different to it. Charles?
A good report was upon a Murray. My boss also had noted in her report, the average camper that she had going in the summer. He gave numbers and they were high. But it's always nice to have an average. And also in her reports, he should note how many of those children are campers. That's always good. So, somebody know that it's a good camp. Because that same child is using, 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 and using. It's something that can be done. It's a good world peace. Thank you. Who ran the basketball camp?
Some professional guy.
What, Mr. Gillis? I love Jake. I love him. Dan, only thing I need to ask, did you put a handicap sign up in Turnquist?
Yeah. Transom court. I called Mark.
Okay.
I don't know if he did or not. But I'll check it. We have to, we have to call Miss Utility first. So, I'm sure that Mark.
And Louis, I asked you, and again, you can repeat to the board, what are the policies at Turnquist? And what are the policy at Buckwood when it comes to parking? Just to repeat.
So, parking, because Turnquist is a special purpose parking area. So, they actually have permits issued to them. They issue, they issue two permits for house plus visitor. So, anybody who lives there can get two residential permits and one visitor's permit. But they have to have that otherwise the cops can give a ticket.
So, a resident that lives there actually can get three?
Yes.
Two for the house and one for the?
Or visitor.
Okay. And Buckwood, what is that?
It's his numbered parking. It's not special purpose parking. Hopefully, the numbering down there will help people, you know, park for the, that's our effort.
I know what effort that actually was. Some kind of answer.
As the additional parking of them were spent positively.
Well, I see a lot of cars parked here. So, it's, I know that.
It's been law received.
Because they added two more.
It's been law received.
I think so. Because I see cars. And they're completely gone now.
Thank you, Dan.
Chief?
The only thing I have, I wanted to bring up Ms. Claire Campbell. Of course, she's been our attorney for the planning commission for many a year. And I believe it's this Friday night that she's going to be sworn in as the district court judge. I was just wondering if we have already done anything to congratulate her from the town?
I think we're going to a party, aren't we?
I don't know.
Maybe we can find something to.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for your service. I would go. That's all I have.
Oh, no, no, no. I never called that out, sir. Chief, could you give a quick report on the police academy?
Yeah.
On the, on the, on the junior.
Junior police academy.
Junior police academy. It's done now, right?
It's done. We have two weeks worth, two separate, two separate classes, each of one week long. I think we had close to, close to fifty in each, in each session, boys and girls both around the community. Got introduced to a number of different things that police officers actually do on their, on their daily job. And we had a graduation ceremony right here in this room for each class. It was a special time. And the kids, the kids love it. The parents, the parents love it. And you talk about repeat, kids coming through a number of times. We, we have several kids that come each year. And we're going to make some adjustments next year where we're going to kind of separate the ages out a little bit differently. Right now, it's just kind of a clamboration of eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. We're going to kind of break it, break it down next year. So, we have the older kids in one group, younger kids in another. But truly a success. And the officers who do it are not assigned to do it. They want to do it. They step up and volunteer, which is, which is even better. And the kids, the kids love the, kids love the cops because they really put them through the paces. They make them, they make them sweat. And of course, you know how hot it's been the past couple of weeks. They, they endured the heat.
I can tell you, I was very fortunate that I was able to attend both ceremonies. And I was very impressed with the whole program, as I was last year when I attended. On, on the other academy note, how are we doing? You've been doing a great job getting the message out about hiring of police officers. I think we got a couple that we're moving forward with?
Yeah, well, we just had, we just had two graduating Harper County Police Academy. We're going to do the swearing in on them in the first September meeting.
Okay.
But actually, just put another officer on this Monday. He needs to be certified. He's going to go through police academy, which will be starting in October. And then we have a number of other persons in the background phase that are looking pretty good. So.
Very good. Great news.
Don't want to jinx ourselves.
Well, great news.
As we approach the school year, who will be assigned to the school system this year?
Jim Rowland, Officer, Officer Jim Rowland.
Just him for all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Well, this is the time of the meeting. You're open up the door for the public to speak. And if you'd like to, I need you to sign in and say a few words.
There's a payback there for me signing.
Right here, right here, Becky. You can, you can sign in as you speak. And I can, there you go, perfectly.
Okay, number one. I want to thank Mary Jo, or partner Jo, Charles, and Jeanie. I'm glad that you're there. Number one, I want to thank Mary Jo for all the work we've done in this town. You people do not realize and do not take time to understand the work that Mary Jo has done for these children in this town. If you're not there, you don't have to do it. Then where you going? Out in the woods. Wherever you want to go. You have to be there to help her out, to know that she's trying her best to bring the children in to a clean part of this town. The town is gone. I can tell you that much. I have been here, don't believe that. I've been here for forty-five years in this town. My uncle has a sign down here across from that apartment belongs to Ms. Thaisley, Wendy Dunn. I believe that like it is. It's for the children. I will not do anything with that. It's there for the children. But my concern is that we have nothing here for the seniors. What if they do? Hello, how are you? What do I want to watch that? Titty all day? Or sat in your room and look stupid and dumb? Well, I'm going to tell you something. As an officer here tonight, no, he says all of you. I do not sit in my room and look stupid and dumb. If you mess with me and you do something to my priority where old seniors are living and can't behave yourself and get off the property from being drunk, wanting to stand out there before you pan down. Well, I'll tell you one thing you can't see. Don't mess with me. I will call the ball in there.
What are you asking us to do?
Number one, I'm gonna, I want to know how long we can buy a car. I mean, we don't need brand-new cars every year. That we don't, you know, Joe, that's true.
Listen, that's the eighteenth time you called me, Joe.
I mean, oh, I'm sorry. You know, that's the truth. We do not need these cars every time you turn around.
Well.
I will bicycle the school. I, that is, the horse will probably take us to when. But that's saying, oh, come on, children, mommy will put you on the school bus.
Okay, I've got it noted. What else you have?
I'm not done. No, I'm not.
Okay, what else?
Anyway, another thing is, with the blue line I'm talking about, it's on one fifty East Main Street. You got cars stopping out there, head on drunk of life, cars carrying on. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm a hard cop. I haven't been. If they don't respond, then I'll tend for. But I had two or three of them that signed to respond to me, which was shared, but I didn't care about. But they were there. Anyway, another thing is, I went up and do me a big thank. Anyway, another thing is, I want to open, do me a big favor, officer, I know you will, but I need yours. I would like to have our phone calls to come here. Why should we, as since, since, seventy-eight years old, or be seventy-nine, eighty-seven, why should I have to call nine one one? Oh, what's the problem? Well, well, this one here, feet, not this one, no, that's not their problem. Their problem is only for us to call if we need an ambulance or a backup for something. Our problem is, we need to do something with options. We have nothing here for seniors, nothing at all here, and both for Mary Jo, we wouldn't have nothing for the children.
Becky, Becky, this entire room helps downtown, and you know that, because you, what do you do at the car shows? You help, you help with the car shows, and I really do that.
I don't do with anything and everything.
That's right, so, and everybody here does too. So, and we'll find more for you to do.
Okay, so I've got it noted. I've got it noted, what else you have?
I mean, if you don't want me here, I'm not coming back to me. But don't look like, well, what's going wrong, we won't walk for it too, because we will. And thank you for letting me talk in the evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
We still love you, Becky.
Thank you, Charles, and you too.
Anyone else have anything to say tonight? Please come down and sign in.
I'm Helters, uh, one fourteen Hart, Still Drive, Elton, Maryland. I do have one thing to say, and I want to talk about this, British Delaware Avenue, we've been talking about this for a good number of years, I cross that thing probably twenty times a day. I come over with trucks, equipment, as does the city, and there ain't anyone else in this room I see all day long. I had an incident the other day, I almost ran over a guy. Blatantly come right out in front of you, okay? Now, I know we've got a great public works department in this city, I work with them very closely, and, and I can get things done, I can put a two-by-ten across the bridge and make it walk. I don't know what the federal government is, the FEMA, I've heard so much about it, the red paper or paper is just unbelievable, I can't believe that we can't get across walking. If they're gonna do something to you, what's the worst they're gonna do to us? Fines? Of course somebody gets killed, and it's gonna happen. Think Mary Jo said a few months ago that someone choose stops, well, I stopped, we tried to stop a ten thousand pound truck at twenty miles an hour. It's very difficult. All I'm trying to say is, we have enough influence in this room and things to get that job done. I don't really care what the federal government says, or the state says, this is to help do it, that little cross bridge belongs to us. And if they want to do something, bring in their bulldozers and their trenches and dig up the pile of sand in there and stop the flood. They're not gonna do it. So something really needs to be done, I'm telling you right now, somebody gonna get hurt. And I don't want to be the guy that has to call somebody and say, just ran over a young man, or a young lady, or little kids walking across, and I don't understand why we can't get something done. I mean, something's gonna happen.
What you gonna say?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's very serious. We can do anything we want to do around this town. I'm the type of guy, I, I do it, I do it. I mean, we got, get a bridge from somewhere.
I think the, of course, the only comment I'll, I'll make is, is I think that we're all doing our darndest to get this thing to happen, we, we have reached out, I think that we've got, kind of got our fingers crossed, and I hate to say it that way, but I think that they, they hear us loud and clear down there, but going back to the point of, we got educated real well when, when I was wanting to put a sign up without getting approval from the state, and it came to me very clearly that you can do whatever you want to do, but, you know, you always hear these buts, and, and if someone was to run off the road and strike that sign that wasn't authorized by the state, then I could have been personally liable for that. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make excuses here, but even with the bridge, we've talked about it, I mean, we've talked about, let's just put this darn thing, we put one years ago in through the woods, let's put, just put one across there. And a lot of the advice that we get is that you can do what you want, but if for some reason the bridge was to fall in, or someone was to get hurt on your bridge without it being authorized, they're gonna come after you personally, and so it's a challenge, it really is. Sometimes we get caught up in, in being scared to a degree, and, but we're not stopping on this bridge, I agree a hundred percent, I think everyone up here does, someone is gonna get hurt on that bridge. In fact, if we ever need testimony, I know an individual that got struck on that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.